Pledge of just to.
I got it. United States of America, we declare the republic of the states. One nation, united states. And with this all, with my people, such as.
You need a roll call please?
Commissioner Furman, doesn't. Commissioner Dwyer.
Present.
Commissioner McFarry, absent. Commissioner Oregar, absent. Commissioner Egger.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Carol was fine.
Present. On time, this time.
Uh, before we start.
Yes.
I would like to introduce our new those managers, Mary Jokes.
Nice to meet you though.
Okay. Today's day what? When did you start?
I started September 8th.
Oh.
And Gabe left, uh, so I officially took over on the 27th.
Welcome.
Almost in London.
Alright. Did anyone have a chance to look over the minutes from our last meeting, which was way back on August 25th?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes? A second. Any discussion changes, anything? Uh, all in safer? Hi. Post? There you go.
What's that?
I abstain.
Okay.
And public comments?
Dan, did you want to do public comments or were you going to talk on your case?
Uh, was do you want to, any questions?
Well, when we get to your case then.
Okay.
So no public comments.
Okay. Then let's dive right into new business. Case number PZC 25 dash 15. Um, this is our, um, next, um, Hampshire West LLC, or otherwise known as Crown Community Development, looking for final plat of subdivision approval for neighborhoods G1, G2, H, I1 and I2.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so as you all know, um, back in March 2023, Crown Development came in for preliminary plat approval for Prairie Ridge North subdivision. As they are ready to construct, uh, make improvements to the various subdivisions, they come forward with a final plat subdivision. Uh, they will, it's typically, typically there's not much changes between the preliminary plat and the final plat, but if there is, although highlighted. Um, I did do a little bit something different with this agenda supplement, uh, just comparing the preliminary plat to the final plat. Uh, for G, the town home has 46 buildings and on the final plat, there's 46 buildings. For H, there's 123 single family units. Same on the final plat and I, it's 146 units, same on the final plat, so there's no changes. Uh, the difference this time engineering has approved everything, so there's no conditions of engineering approval on this one. Um, for, so, and then there's no required findings of facts of, facts of subdivision, so there's no presented to the commission. Uh, staff did provide recommended condition of approval, which I'm reading with a typo of W, X and Y, which should be G, G1, G2, H, I1 and I2. Um, but the recommendation, recommended motion is correct. If you have any question, myself and Mr. Henkel, uh, the petition representative is here to answer any questions you guys may have. I can call the class on the TV screen if that makes it easier.
Does anyone have any question?
No. They've been over the last nine.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion, I make a motion or I ask for a motion.
Uh, you go ask for a motion.
Okay.
You could directly make the motion yourself, but typically cherry ass.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to recommend approval of PCC dash 25 dash 15 for a final plans of subdivision for Prairie Ridge North neighborhoods G1, G2, H, I1 and I2. So moved?
A second.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Furman?
Right.
Commissioner Dwyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Egger?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Alright, there you go.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and then our next, um, case number PZC dash 25 dash 13. Um, Hampshire Township owns a property at 147 Milk Avenue and they are requesting a variance to permit a gravel parking lot.
Yes, um, just one correction, the section, the variance should be, I was brought by, tested by Commissioner Dwyer, who I appreciate the help for. Uh, it should be 611, 6 dash 11 dash 1 dash E. So if anybody makes that motion, um, just reference that code section, it does not change it because it's still the same request. It's still for gravel versus paved, it's just, um, difference in parking lot versus lot, open lot kind of area. If that makes sense, does anybody have question on that part? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I do. So this is currently gravelled and it was purchased by?
The township.
The township, right? And, uh, according to the current codes, it should be paved, correct?
Yeah, if they're making improvements, it has to be paved.
Okay, so are there improvements going on to the lot?
Yeah, they'll be taking down the, uh, let me pull off.
So any part of, any improvements on the lot, what's, I'm going to need to bring it up to code?
Which trigger, so they don't have to make the entire lot paved, just a portion that they're making improvements to.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Improvements going on to the gravel lot?
What's that?
Other improvements going on to the gravel lot?
Not, I don't believe the gravel lot, but I'll turn over to the petitioner if they.
No, there's no improvement, so this guy tear down a building and.
That, that considers improvements.
Right, but we're going to stop and put up a new salt building, which will be paved.
That's still improvements, right?
After the.
So the portion that's being proved of the lot has to be brought up to code. So the part, the footprint of the building, we pull, um, the map, so it'll be easier.
Our salt, our salt trucks going to be going in and out?
Only in the winter.
Cause it's groundless.
Only in the winter time, that's why I don't want to pave it because it's going to just tear it up.
Shouldn't it tear up the road too?
Oh.
Going in and out with salt trucks.
The, where, oh, you can't see me first. The bottom left hand corner, I believe that's the building that's being torn down, correct?
Yes.
And that's going to be replaced with a salt chat, salt dome. Um, and that area needs to be approved with a paved surface.
No, will that be done after, so there'd be a post change as opposed to before? I mean, why would you deconstruct the building and put the parking lot, pave it before you do that?
Well, when they put the salt dome, then they'll pave.
Is there a timeframe that they have to coincide with that?
Uh, well, in order to get their permit, they need to, right now, show us a paved surface. So, and permits are good for one year, so I guess within one year, but you guys can put conditions on any approval that you recommend.
Well, salt trucks are going to be going in and out of this and, you know, bringing those gravel rocks onto the road and tearing it up, what was going in and out of here before?
It used to be a dairy plant, from my understanding. Uh, I don't know when the dairy plant ceased operation and what was in between. Um, unfortunately, I don't have that historical knowledge, but maybe it's to more refine right. Let's get rid of this stuff.
Let's see.
Those were 90s.
I was going to say, I was out of high school, so it stopped being a dairy, I would say, in, in the 90s.
Okay.
And then it's been used for just storage, so there's been trucks in and out of there all along.
And the food pantry in there as well.
Oh yeah, the food pantry is there for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, but not.
Now it's acts as a parking lot.
Yeah, but not heavy salt trucks, stop saying.
Are you tearing down all of the building?
Eventually, not the whole, but I'm just going to do it in phases.
Okay.
So the bottom left corner, like from here, this part and this part is gone, the original building is going to stay for now.
Where, where's the?
The gravel is right, right here.
So you're going to keep that gravel there?
Yes.
In front of the dome you're putting up?
Well, the, the door is going to be, well, it's going to be half the size of this building. This building is 88 by 50, so it's going to be a 40 by 40 building for the, what they, that's going to be paved and then the section in front of the door is going to be paved, but the gravel lot is right there.
But you're still, they're still improving on that entire lot.
Well, technically.
Technically, they're improving on the, on the lot.
Right.
So it needs to be brought up to, to code.
So typically staff, um, and direct them to improve the portion that's being touched, not the entire portion, but again, if the plan is only commissioned, well, if you guys recommend denial, then the portion, that's, it's been up to interpretation. Um, you know, whether it should be the entire lot or just a portion that's being touched. And the historical interpretation is just a portion that's being touched and not the entire structure of the entire lot.
I, I don't really.
Have we granted this variance to anyone else? I know that several people that have asked.
Yes, um, the park district has received gravel parking lot. They came in, I think, last year and there was the condition that the town zoning commission and the village board approved was the accessible stalls had to be paved and they had to provide a paved accessible route. Um, and then there was one up on Arrowhead Drive, um, that was approved, um, for truck trailer, tractor trailer storage yard.
And jailhouse homes.
Uh, so those two were.
He didn't get approval.
No.
There's been a lot of inconsistency when it comes to the gravel parking.
Yeah.
And then there's still, there's no throughway to the other, like, like the park district have got a, had a, had a paved throughway to the other paved area. There, there would be no paved throughway to the other paved area here.
As, um, well, there's no.
Right, you're, you're kind.
Public routes on this, but I understand what you're saying, if you want to add that as a condition, that's up to the, you guys of the commission.
I just think it needs to be cohesive, I mean, it looks like, you know, kind of like patchwork.
Half paved, half not paved.
This, have that, make it. The, the intent is in the future to tear down the rest of the building and make it a paved parking lot. So it would be more cohesive if we could be granted some extension on that so that when we do tear down the rest of the building, we can make it all one paved area.
I, well, plan, gotta be a parking lot?
Pardon me?
The rest of it, are you just having it be a parking lot?
This time, that is our intent, we don't know for sure, but that is intent when that building comes down, the second half of the building comes down.
We do need more parking.
There, there's more parking requirement or needs in the area, so that would be the intent.
You guys have a sweeper to clean as the trucks go in and out?
Yes.
So you have a sweeper to click.
It goes on a skid steer, yep.
Does that skid steer, a sweeper, skid steer, it'll just?
No way, it goes, it's a sweeper, it's a broom that's going on a skid steer. Is that like a street sweeper?
And a nuance, you know, based off of what Mo had mentioned, you know, we're looking at section 611 1E, which isn't the parking section of the zoning code, it's the loading section of the zoning code because they're not necessarily parking passenger vehicles here, they're talking about loading trucks, so it's a different section of the zoning code than some of those variances that we were talking about historically as well, those were specifically in the parking section or vehicle parking, but this is a little bit different use case.
Yeah, but you'd be going onto a city street with all that gravel.
That's awesome.
And the trucks in and out all winter long.
Where's your salt now?
Down at Peterson's, past guesses. Uh, you know, the gas station is down there, right there.
Turn you off that road.
Is it a gravel lot down there?
Yes.
Yes.
So there will be no more gravel on the road than it's already there because they're already doing it.
They're actually.
A little bit closer.
That's about there, so it's already grandfathered, this is.
I get it.
You're adding, you're developing.
Well, we can ask for a baby, that's a pain, to deal with it, get them find them, figure out when they're going to demolish the other structure and then just make the whole thing paved. Is that a true statement?
Oh, so like, let them, let them be gravel for now and then when they pave the whole rest of the lot, pave this?
Well, they, they want a time to figure out what they're going to do with the other buildings, so what is the, what is the need to do that so then make it safe? And just make it look and be seamless.
What's your timeline?
Don't really have a timeline, but it's going to be five years to get the other building down.
What's your timeline for this one?
Oh, soon as possible, I want to start demo here in the next couple of weeks and then salt building by spring, be constructed.
And then the rest of it wouldn't, they don't have a plan for the rest of it quite yet, so it could be a year, it could be.
Five years, 10 year.
Never.
Never. They're stuck there for the time.
Yeah.
So.
Thoughts from this side?
I, I see this as a different consideration than what we've had before because there isn't a public aspect to this, like a parking lot would be when we're talking loading and as, as a loading day, I do hear you when it comes to dragging stuff onto the street. I, I understand that concern as well. Um, but I, I just, I see a different argument for loading versus for parking.
So have we ever granted, do you know, historically, um?
Not for the loading section.
The 1 dash E?
Not for the loading section, that I'm aware of. There's always been my, Commissioner Dwyer said for the parking, actual parking spaces.
Where, I don't see any of that here, where's the loading, where's the parking?
Yeah.
The difference, I see one big blob and I don't know where what is. What's, where's the loading, where's the parking?
So the bottom left hand corner where the.
Yes, all the trucks. Look at this one.
That's going to be demolished.
Do we have any architectural drawings on what's going up?
Um, and we see on the, you guys meant for the site still?
The hill is still being drawn up, but that we are not.
Okay, you just have stumpy demolitions, we don't remember. We don't have, our, our.
If there's the colors, without a survey and it'll be gone.
No, it's, but, you know.
Yeah, that might help clarify already.
Well, hmm.
Scott, that's just inconceivable.
He's picking up a 40 by 40 permit. And this, where it's going to load just from this bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the purple is the existing proposed gravel lot with the chat showing the bottom left hand corner?
Alright, so there'll be no trucks parked down it throughout the year?
No, it's just a building.
Nothing, nothing will be parked down throughout the year?
Well, just a salt building, just storage for salt, that's it.
Should we vote? Steve, where everyone is?
So I have on page three of the agenda supplement.
Yes.
There's two recommendation, recommended motion, one for denial, one for approval, I'll recommend going to the approval one first. And then if that doesn't pass, then we're left feeling the denial. Um, when staff did on it, recommend any conditions of approval, um, for this project, but again, the commission can add any conditions of approval for the bill of four to consider if you would like.
Okay, how can?
No, it's, it's, I.
Oh, so none of these methods.
I, I would like to make a recommendation for approval. So I, I move to accept to adopt the petitioner's findings of fact as attached to this agenda supplement and recommend approval of case PZC 25 13 for variance to section, uh, 611 1V E. Um, let me go left, I almost think this, uh, to permit a gravel, um, I'm not going to call it parking lot, I'm going to call it a loading zone whereas a paved service, surface is required.
Second.
Okay, so did you understand her motion?
Uh huh.
So she changed it to a permit to permit a gravel loading zone, not parking lot. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Furman?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Egger?
Hmm, okay.
Commissioner Ross?
Nay.
What's your guess, it's pretty wide.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Did you make a double?
It doesn't mean.
I don't think so.
Jody?
Yes.
I'll go to the board November 6th.
November 6th?
Yep. I'll send you an email, just so you have that in writing.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, man.
Thanks, done shopping with my colleagues. Okay, and then our third one, case number PZC 25 dash 14, and this is from the Village of Hampshire.
Yes.
Talking about surfing.
Yeah. Shall I start the spiel?
Start your spiel.
Alright, so currently the zoning ordinance is, um, ambiguous and very silent on fence regulations. Uh, so staff, um, based on some recent permits, um, and some issues that have come up, we are presenting text amendments to the zoning ordinance to codify, uh, fence regulation requirements. Um, this will develop throughout the village, um, and also kind of protect residential properties from non-residential properties by providing sufficient screening between them. Um, I have provided three attachments, the first one, sec, to section 6310. Uh, it just deletes the, kind of the corner language regarding general side yard fences because that will go into the, the next section that we will be discussing. Um, section 6311, which is going to be the new section in the code, um, they provide for general requirements uh, for all types of fencing, required fences, which is primarily between non-residential and residential property and also enclosures for, um, garbage and dumpsters. Then we have prohibited type fences and gates. Um, well, English speaks for itself on that. And then the heights, um, allowed, uh, in different types of districts. We have staff is proposing six feet max height of single family residential districts and then non-residential and multi-family district, a maximum height, fence height of 10 foot. Um.
This is new. Six foot. Not much.
I don't know.
That was in.
Six feet, 63, I don't know, B.
Yes.
A minimum of six foot and up to, yes, from 10 foot.
Well, that's required fences.
Yeah, which section are you up yet?
Being here.
B, yeah, so those are required fences, so when you say there's like a shopping center backing up to a residential property, they would be required to put up a fence, a minimum of that height. But if, say I own a single family home and I want to put up a fence, the maximum height I can put up is six foot. So it requires fencing between non-residential and residential property.
There's no minimum, you put up the smallest fence you want.
So if, if you were a residential property and you wanted to put up a three inch fence, technically, yes, you could.
Okay, that's what I'm just saying.
Yes.
To trip you.
At your own risk?
Yes.
You only do it once.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can I ask a question on the prohibited fences?
Yes.
Can we add no snow fences, no plastic fencing?
No.
Yeah, like, I will leave that to discussion to the plan, his own commission.
Just.
Because there's vinyl fencing, which is plastic.
Yes, but that's not what I mean. I mean the fencing that El Cheeto has around his temporary food prep thing out there, he's got green snow fencing.
So I believe they're not putting snow fencing in here?
It's awful. Looks terrible.
Okay.
I don't see, I don't see snow fencing.
Okay, that was an omission on my part, so yeah, I meant to include snow fencing except during a winter season. You know, um, we can add that as a an amendment to this and then.
Do we allow that fencing, who's got, right now?
Well, I call it something.
I just got to go.
No, we don't, we don't allow it.
It's also called silt fencing.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's snow or silt fencing unless in the case of a snow event or in case of construction.
Okay. Technically, after.
There is a, like, ambiguity on, no, it's not a snow fence, it's silk.
Right.
So I'm going to add that to prohibited as five.
Yep, I like that.
As we're open in discussion, I, I got an advanced copy of this. And I, I've, I, I completely respect staff's recommendation when it comes to a maximum height of six feet in a residential area. I personally disagree with it.
Why?
Um.
Privacy fence.
Privacy fence, six feet is an industry standard, it is absolutely an industry standard, I completely agree with that as an industry standard. Um, I have a unique case, all the guys in my immediate family are 6'6", 6'8", giants, um, we have some giants on the commission.
All-star point.
An example, just as an example, so it just, me as a, you know, a single woman who owns, you know, a house with a backyard. I've got a fence though being non-conforming, just because my default was, well, my brother can see over the fence, that just gives me the peedee geebies and that's my sample size of a gentleman who could be walking past.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I would lean towards seven feet, I don't think we have, you know, Kareem Abdul-Jabbar walking past very often, but we do have some very tall gentlemen.
I wish we would make it six feet all the way across the board.
I wish it were, they'd made us fill up in a subdivision.
It would be lower than six.
Everybody can see over the fence there.
I mean, I can see over everybody's fence.
Mm-hmm. But that's just my sample size.
Yeah.
Personal opinion, but I, I completely agree, six feet is an industry standard, so.
Some subdivisions won't allow seven feet.
Yes.
So some divisions don't allow over four feet, like ours.
Mm-hmm.
You try to change that for you.
So my two cents, if you guys want to take it into consideration.
You know, it's something.
I don't mind seven feet, I don't care, it sounds good to me.
I don't mind.
Our four foot fence puts up to a six foot construction fence, it doesn't match at all and.
No, it sounds like four out of the five are wanting to go as a seven feet.
Seven feet?
Seven feet, okay.
I'm, I'm always going to go against them.
I'll go down two.
So I change, um, section D1 to seven foot.
Yep.
Love it.
Anything else?
Setbacks, minimal setbacks.
Yeah.
So setback to be setback front. No sidewalks, uh, no setbacks on the sidewalks for corner lots?
There is, so that, so for corner side yard fences shall be setback a minimum of 10 feet from the corner sidewalk line.
So for it be from the sidewalk and?
The property line, corner sidewalk line, so sometimes there's a gap between the property line and the sidewalk, so we, we always use the, the property lines as the where you measure from. Uh, because sometimes there's, there could be a two foot gap, there could be a three foot gap, sometime the property line obstructs the sidewalk, so.
Sometimes there's no sidewalk.
Yep.
So here's the thing, if one of people who already have sidewalks that violate or fences that violate this.
They will be considered illegal non-conforming, so they can keep the fence as is, but in the, say, 10 years down the road, they tear down the fence, they would have to then bring into compliance, but if they have a fence as is, they can keep it, they can maintain it, they can repair panels, replace panels.
As long as they don't take posts up.
Yep, essentially, you take it again. So repair maintenance is allowed, but if they're replacing anything like posts, taking down a 20 foot section of fencing and it has to be brought into compliance with the current code.
Good?
Good.
Does my motion have to include the changes?
Uh, I would say with changes noted.
Okay.
Just so it's kind of clear.
Okay, so I will give a motion to recommend approval of PZC 25 dash 14 for a text amendment to chapter six, article three of the Hampshire zoning ordinance regarding fence. Fence regulations and requirements with changes noted.
And motion?
Yes. Ball sucka. We'll call.
Commissioner Furman?
No.
Commissioner Doi?
Yes.
Commissioner Agar?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
No.
No? Yeah, they're all repaid.
They're all?
Yes.
You can draw.
Yes.
Motion package thirty-two.
Alright, how about some old business?
Um, I can't think of any old business, uh. Old book.
I have a question on old business.
Yes.
So when we did the last, um, plat.
Mm-hmm.
Provals, the board denied one of them.
Denied neighborhood Y, um, the density apparently changed, which I was, I did not catch.
Oh, I was wondering why they denied that.
So, but the other two were W and X were approved. Um, so yeah, I think.
So why has been kicked back?
So yeah, it depends on, on how significant changes are, if there's significant changes, it'll come back to the planning zoning commission for reconsideration. If it's just reminding them, like, a building two feet, it'll still stay at the board's hole. But it depends on what they come back with, and staff will evaluate that and make a recommendation of how I should proceed.
Sure.
Um, and then anything further with our zoning?
Uh, yes, I am working on stuff, I'm doing some research, I'm putting some more changes. And then if you guys have had a chance to review it, if you can provide me any feedback, that way I can kind of build it into, uh, the revisions.
You wanna email?
What's that?
You wanna email?
Yes, please. Um, I can, if you, we will be having a meeting on the twenty-seventh of October. So I can bring it back then, we have one other ag- agenda item, um, that is. Um, going on the twenty-seventh as of right now, so I can bring it back on the twenty-seventh for further consideration. But it is still being worked on.
Okay.
So I'll take one.
Anything else, old business announcements?
Um.
We already said we're meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, happy birthday.
Who was that? The thirtieth of September.
How many years young?
Thirty-four. Yep, good old three-four.
I'm gonna be six-seven.
Six-seven.
You're great.
Very, thanks.
You look great.
Alright, if nothing else, um, adjourned.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I motion the adjourn.
I say.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, is it a doubt? Still my regulations on Clemson.